Yeah, you're ready to go.
Okay, thank you Spencer. Welcome everybody, we're gonna call our meeting to order for our planning board agenda. Uh, no, sorry, um, meeting or continuation of the meeting from the other evening. Uh, we have two items, uh, on the docket tonight and, uh, we'll go into, uh, into that shortly. Declarations of conflict of interest. See none. Okay, thank you. And I need approval of the agenda. I think it's pretty straightforward. So moved by Basil Hamley, seconded by Counselor Yankov. All those in favor of the agenda, please raise your hand. Good, thank you. Uh, reports. So first one is, uh, rezoning eighty-five Mall Peck Road, PID three eight eight one eight one. And I believe Robert Jilkey's on board to do the presentation.
Hello folks, thank you Mr. Chair. Uh, can everyone hear and see my presentation?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Alright, so, uh, this is basically, uh, a follow-up meeting from the, uh, public hearing that, uh, council presided over and of course the board members were there pertaining to eighty-five Mall Peck Road, which is basically, uh, the rezoning and, uh, official plan redesignation. Uh, so basically, uh, the rezoning is from residential to institutional, same as the OP designation. Uh, the intent is to consolidate the subject property, which contains, uh, a surface parking law for overflow parking for the, uh, adjacent senior care home on the adjacent property. So that lot will be consolidated with that subject property, um, in order to accommodate an expansion of the existing senior home. So, uh, basically that is the property that's outlined. Um, it's designated as low density residential. It's also Zoned R one L, which is a single detached residential zone. Uh, the intention is to rezone and change the official plan designation to institutional to allow for the expansion of the senior care home facility that's located on the adjacent property, uh, directly south. Uh, so in regards to public feedback received, uh, we actually, our department received no letters of support nor objection on the application. Uh, we did receive some correspondence from residents on, located along Trainer Street, um, inquiring as to the setback of the proposed addition to the rear property line. That's a share common property line between the residential lot and, uh, the subject property. Uh, and, uh, there was questions regarding the, uh, security of the sites, um, that could be accommodated through, uh, either a fence or a combination of our landscape or a combination of, uh, of both. Um, the applicant was online to answer some of those questions, in which we did have a resident, uh, during the public meeting speak up, uh, and what's concerns about that. Uh, the intention I believe was that, uh, the addition would, uh, be, maintain at least twenty-five feet from the rear property line. Now, the zoning bylaw requires under the institutional zone, uh, twenty feet. Uh, the submitted site plan that the applicant presented, uh, was highlighted as twenty-five feet. Uh, however, uh, pertaining to the any concerns that the residents would have for, uh, mitigating the potential use of the addition, uh, there is already a requirement in the zoning bylaw that if this property were to be successfully rezoned and re-designated to institutional, uh, then the, uh, owner of the property would have to install a four meter thirteen foot land use buffer uh, between, uh, the residential low density lots and the, uh, subject property. And again, this could be either a fence or a combination of fence and landscaping. So those issues would be addressed through, uh, just regular bylaw requirements that would be, uh, required a time of building permit application for the addition to this senior care home. Um, that's the proposed addition which everyone has received and, uh, that basically sums up, uh, the report and, uh, any public feedback that we had, uh, in regards to, uh, the application. And I can take any, uh, any questions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert, very much. Uh, any questions for Robert, folks? Uh, the public meeting went very well. Um, there was some good, uh, good feedback, uh, there from residents too and, uh, so I don't know. Seems like it's pretty straightforward at this point, I guess. If no one has any questions, I'll probably look for a motion, I guess, uh, for us to, uh, encourage Planning Board to recommend this to, uh, to approve, uh, the request to change both the official plan destination and the zoning, um, from R one to institutional. So, uh, if I have a mover and a sagger, then we can vote. So moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by, uh, Bob Kenny. All those in favor, please put up your hands. Two, three, I think that's everybody. We're good. Uh, anyone against? See none. Okay, thank you very much, everybody. That's a great project, uh, going forward there, I think. And, uh, anytime we get to help out our seniors, uh, it's a great thing to do as well. So good for the community. Uh, so moving on to, uh, see, uh, short-term rental, uh, STR, uh, strategy moving forward. Uh, I believe Alex is gonna give a quick presentation here and, uh, we'll follow with questions and concerns. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as the committee is aware, uh, council went to first, uh, reading, uh, in, uh, January to deal with the short-term, uh, rental, uh, uh, bylaw provisions, dealing with the zoning bylaw only in January. Uh, and, uh, you know, this is, you know, we had indicated at that time that was the part of, the first part of the strategy dealing with STRs. That's the land use part of it, but there's a whole, uh, number of other regulatory components. Uh, if we're going to fully regulate STRs to the extent that, uh, uh, needs to be done, if, if we're gonna get into the, you know, the regulating business. So, uh, again, council, uh, uh, sent the first pack, or the first package went through, dealing with where they would be located. Uh, and, uh, uh, and, and so where we are now is the, uh, you know, we need to, uh, discuss a few items, uh, uh, that were referenced in that report that went to Planning Board and Council that you reviewed, uh, dealing with what are we gonna do for, uh, uh, these operators that, uh, uh, do not, uh, meet the, the, the new bylaw uh, that's coming forward. So, uh, the way it was structured was that the, uh, initially was the zoning bylaw, uh, provisions would come in first. They may be adopted end of March type thing from the province. And then the rest of the regulatory framework would come in in January of twenty twenty-three. That's the summary conviction bylaw and the licensing bylaw. The fee schedule would come in with it. Protocols dealing with, uh, uh, you know, inspections that would be done by the city. That would all wait till twenty twenty-three. So, uh, it, it, there, there has been, uh, a small amendment to this, uh, report, uh, through discussion with the city solicitor, uh, dealing with this grace period. The grace period being when the minister signs off on the, uh, if he does, uh, the E or G, the amendments that are gonna, uh, that are presently going through council. And if they're finished in February, they'll likely be signed off by the minister in March. So the only thing that's changed since the first report is that, uh, our, our solicitor felt that it's likely more prudent to bring the regulations all into force and effect at the same time, which would be January of twenty twenty-three. Instead of having the zoning piece ready, uh, in March of this year, uh, we would, we would hold off and we would place that right in the bylaw, get second reading, indicating that, uh, we're intending, uh, you know, to make a change and that, uh, uh, that we would be indicating that all of the bylaw, including the land use piece on the zoning, official plan amendments, the zoning amendment, amendments, would come into place as well in January. Uh, there's, there are some, couple of reasons for that. Uh, it's gonna take some time for us to get the summary conviction bylaw, uh, you know, uh, through council. That should happen in the fall. Keeping in mind, the summary conviction bylaw is not only a bylaw dealing with short-term rentals, it's a component of it, but it is a corporate bylaw that, so all departments, we need to make sure that that bylaw works for everyone, as well as the registration bylaw. So, uh, you know, you, you see a number of, uh, you know, uh, requirements that, that are going to follow or flow from the amendments if they are approved, uh, next Monday night at council. Uh, you know, and again, that they're listed there in detail. One, enact the supporting, uh, official plan amendments, coupled with the short-term, uh, rental, uh, licensing bylaw and enforcement bylaw to govern the activities of short-term rentals. Uh, registration and licensing requirements for platforms and STR operators, short-term rental license regulations and fees for STR operators, enforcement provisions for summary conviction, allow the grace period, uh, and again, just more on the grace period. So between, uh, when these amendments come through, through in March, uh, uh, people that own an STR operation, uh, would, uh, have to work with the province. Every time the province receives an application, they'll be sending over a letter to the city and saying, does this location comply with your bylaw? So, uh, in twenty twenty-two, uh, uh, we will be writing a letter back to the province indicating, uh, that this property e- either is lining up with the new amendments that are gonna come into place in January of twenty twenty-three, or it doesn't line up with the, uh, amendments coming in place in twenty twenty-three. But notwithstanding, council has provided a grace period from the end of March to January to allow, uh, uh, the, uh, any operator, uh, to, uh, to operate during that period. Uh, we would write the letter to the province saying, uh, this particular property doesn't line up with the new regulations. It will be approved for twenty twenty-two. It will not be approved in twenty twenty-three. So, uh, again, it gives us all a little bit of time to, uh, uh, do some education with the STR operators, uh, let them do whatever they need to do to adjust to the new regulations. It allows us to bring in the summary conviction bylaw and the licensing bylaw and have it all ready, uh, to go into, uh, force and effect early in January, because this is a very seasonal type business and, uh, as noted in the report, uh, operators are already looking for that direction from the city at this time. And, uh, uh, this approach will, uh, basically align everything up between the province and the city and the operators and provide the clarity that's needed for, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, so, uh, you know, all of those c- conditions are in my report, uh, Mr. Chair. And again, the only change from the original report, uh, that went to you on the weekend is on the bot, on second reading, we will add in both the official plan amendments and then the zoning bylaw amendments. These amendments will come into force and effect on the date which is the latter of ministerial approval and January tenth of twenty twenty-three. So with that, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, that's my report. If you have any questions, uh, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alex. Uh, that's a lot of information there. So anyway, uh, um, I think we'll open it up for, uh, anyone's got some concerns or questions. Now would be the time to, to, uh, to bring them up. Um, I guess, uh, for me, uh, um, you know, the, the change between first reading and second reading, can, can you explain that a little more, Alex?
Yeah, so, you know, there's no debate at second reading. Uh, council can't have a debate at second reading. But you can amend the bylaw at second reading. Uh, there is a process for that. I've been working with the solicitor. So we just need to insert that, uh, these, it, it, in that, uh, suite of amendments that are going through now. Uh, these amendments will come into force and effect on the date which is the latter of the ministerial approval and January tenth of twenty twenty-three. Uh, the, uh, the CAO will, uh, there's a process, uh, for amendments at second reading. So he'll insert them. Council will vote on that piece. And then, uh, if, if council and the planning board want to go in that direction, uh, now this report is providing the clarity about the grace period, how those letters that are gonna be, uh, submitted to the city from the province of, uh, of, for those seeking, uh, a provincial tourism license, uh, uh, they, they're, and looking for clarity as to whether they comply with the bylaw. We will be able to provide those letters in twenty twenty-two, indicating you're either lining up and you'll be fine in twenty twenty-three, or you do not comply, uh, in twenty twenty-three, but council has given us direction to approve you in twenty twenty-two. So again, it's, 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 it is helpful on the communication piece. And, uh, you know, again, provides them with the transition to, uh, uh, you know, of, of make business decisions as to what they, they, they want to do with those properties moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Alex. Uh, I'll open it up for questions, folks. Anyone got anything they wanna say or questions? Uh, Counselor McCabe.
Hi, thanks. And thank you, Alex. And I, that made what I, this whole thing today a little clearer. I was really confused why we were back here when we had already pushed this to council and read the first reading as well. But I'm just wondering, like, I think I was pleasantly surprised. You know, we've been very fortunate, if you sit in Planning Board, to hear all of the, the background and the detail and the presentation that Robert put so much work into and was able to present that to us. And I was really taken aback when we, when we got to council and it passed unanimously without one question. Like, I'm really wondering, just to amend this, is there any way we can go back so Robert would be able to present to council again without just amending it and throwing it through for a second reading with no opportunity for discussion? I, I just feel like you wanna make sure everybody's clear with what, what they're doing.
Yeah, no, I, I will, uh, I, 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 I will certainly look into that. I mean, uh, and then I, I'll, 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 we're, follow up with the chair in regard to what we can do to make sure that, you know, people are comfortable with the, these bylaw provisions, but without, uh, tainting or compromising, uh, you know, that, that role, there's no debate. But, but, uh, I, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, but I'm not the lawyer. But, uh, we should be able to just communicate to you and explain the bylaw in more detail. And there, there wouldn't be a debate, but, but hopefully, uh, you know, the, uh, the, the debate wouldn't happen between you and your colleagues. But, but as long as people, uh, felt that they had a, a firmer understanding, I will get some clarity from, uh, uh, Mr. Julio as to whether we could set that up for the next council meeting to make sure that not only the counselors were aware of, of how it was all going to work, uh, but the public who, uh, it's going to, uh, potentially affect, uh, were aware of the implications of it.
All right, Counselor McCabe. You're on mute. You're on mute.
Sorry, that's rare. Not very many people usually tell me to speak louder. Um, I really think that the clarity around this, it is such an important issue and there's been so much work put into it, that I really just think that that, that lead into what Robert explained would be really helpful for, for more than just Counselor Yankov, McLeod, his worship and myself. And whether you can debate it after the fact or not, I don't know. Whether we amend it, I'm not sure.
Right. We, we, yeah, I, I, I can look into that and I had, had sort of had some, uh, you know, I have talked to Mr. Julio on this. So, uh, I, I will advise, uh, the chair as quickly as I can and we'll see what we can do, uh, and can't do, what we can, can and can't do on Monday night. But, uh, uh, having people more informed, uh, on anything is always better than less informed. But just don't want to, don't wanna be trying to, um, make that amendment at second reading and get into some mischief because we didn't do it correctly. That's, that's my only concern, but I will provide that direction to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, uh, Counselor Yanka.
Thank you and thank you, Alex. I was a little bit like Counselor McCabe, I was a little bit confused. Um, but once you explained it through, it's a little clearer. So basically what, what, what we're doing with the, in terms of the first reading is, um, putting in potentially, if council agrees, the amendment that says these amendments will come into full force and effect on that date, which is the latter of ministerial approval, January tenth, twenty twenty-three. And so regardless of that, this is still second reading and there's no debate. Is that, can, what you?
Right, that, that, that is correct. Uh, uh, and, and, but, you know, Mr. Kelly will have to be very clear and he's gonna have to read that into the record that there was a small change to the bylaw. He'll, he'll telegraph, but we know what, what, what is happening at second reading. But I guess the question of, uh, Counselor McCabe is, uh, whether, uh, just prior to that or, you know, w- maybe we can do it prior to the council meeting, I'm not certain. But I, I will, uh, ask of what we can do to inform council about the whole suite of the package, uh, the planning e- elements of it, uh, and the legal ramifications or potential legal ramifications. But I think, uh, but I'll get clarity. I just don't think that you as a council can then start to debate, uh, you know, after that. You, you're just gonna have to say, thank you for the presentations to, to, uh, the solicitor and I. And then, uh, and then, but then, but you can vote on it individually as to whether you're comfortable with the direction it's going. But I, I, I just wanna make absolutely certain that I don't, uh, uh, you know, uh, give you the wrong impression as to what you can do on Monday night, but we will look at, try to provide that clarity.
Hey, thank you.
I just have, sorry, so correct, I understand that you wouldn't be able to debate it. But if council didn't feel at that point, and this is more of a point of clarification, if council didn't feel at that point they were ready to fully support it, they don't have to necessarily vote for it. It could go back where they have more opportunity for discussion and whatever at another point if they weren't comfortable with just as it's, correct?
You could defer or you could just turn it down. That's the other two options, defer or turn it down.
Yeah, but they, I still feel it would be important for them to understand completely what it is.
Right, right. Again, I mean, I'm, I'm, I, I have no problem with that. I mean, staff are here, that's what we're here for. But, but again, there's a process around it and it's just the fact that there's no, there's no debate at second, uh, reading. Uh, we, uh, I, I don't think it's gonna, uh, you know, conflict with that, cuz we're, 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 it's not gonna be a debate. It's just a, it's providing information individually for every individual counselor to make up their mind as to whether, what they wanna do at the second reading.
Okay, um, how about, uh, board members? Anyone got, uh, you know, we're here tonight to see what the board thinks. So, uh, Rosemary, you got a question?
Um, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Alex. And I just have, um, a question in the comment, I guess. I, just in terms of the timeframe of implementing the bylaws and regulatory framework in January twenty twenty-three, that's a year, less than a year away, which in one way doesn't seem that far away. However, we've been at this now for, I don't know, well over, like before COVID.
Two years.
It's all well over two years. So I'm just kinda wondering about the timelines and also wondering, is it still gonna be a priority of council in January of twenty twenty-three? So that's one question I have. And then the second, um, comment question was just around the documentation in your recommendations, Alex. So I don't see anywhere in the recommendations that it's option one that the bylaws are gonna be developed around, which is owner occupied.
That, that's all, so, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I think, I'm just wondering, does that need to be clearly stated somewhere in the documentation that it's option one? That the bylaws are gonna be developed with respect to?
Uh, uh, option one is embedded in the bylaw, uh, provisions that, that were read at first reading, right? So all of the provisions to make option one come into effect are part of the bylaw. Option one, like, you, 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 wh- once we decided which way we were gonna go at the public meeting, uh, it, it, option one is kind of immaterial now. It was, that was sort of a, a guiding tool early on. But, uh, you know, we're, we're dealing with all of the amendments, basically, uh, that to bring in that option one into force and effect, and that's the bylaw that we're discussing.
I, I understand that. I just think from a communications perspective, you can't be too clear with people, you know? It's to say, this is the option that we're talking about and here, this is how the bylaws will unfold. But anyway, that's my own personal perspective. And then the other question is around the timing and, you know, should we wait for a year? What's gonna happen in a year's time? Is it still gonna be a priority? People gonna wanna act on it in a year's time?
Uh, uh, you know, through the chair, uh, well, the, the reality is, is that, uh, council's gonna be deliberating on Monday night and it's gonna start to go into the bylaw. So, uh, the only way that, uh, uh, like, in, in, if, if they don't wanna deal with it, they're going to have to then amend the bylaw to take all of these provisions out. So that, that's, that's the part of it. It's coming into law, uh, it'll come into law, uh, in March. Uh, but it's just, it, the date on it is in the future. Uh, the, the, uh, why that is of, uh, important to us, it provides clarity to the STR operators who have been, uh, you know, concerned in regard to, uh, what is the city gonna do? And unfortunately, we're now right in, in the, we're heading into the middle of their, their season. They're booking, are potentially trying to book, uh, their various, uh, uh, sites. And they, they need that clarity in regard to, is the city gonna allow me to operate in twenty twenty-two? Which this would allow if it's approved. And, uh, and, but, and will they allow me to operate in twenty twenty-three? And if it appears that they're not, then I need to make some decisions as to what I want, what I, I want to do with some of those properties.
So, Alex, can I just clarify? So I think what I hear you saying is that, that some of the bylaws are coming into effect in March of, this March.
Right, that, that part's done.
Process is going to unfold and kind of is non-stoppable? So the January twenty twenty-three date is not that important? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, the, the January, the, the first part of what Planning Board and Council already dealt with is where are these, uh, type of operations going to be permitted to be located in the city? So that's been through Planning Board, it's been to council, it's been given first reading. Uh, so the council is going to, uh, give, or potentially, uh, they will contemplate second reading, the next council meeting. So that's the biggest part of the puzzle. Uh, the, 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 the reason that we need some time, staff need some time, is that there's a summary conviction bylaw, is when, when we bring the whole thing into effect and start, uh, looking for a license similar to the province on an annual basis. If somebody doesn't have a license, we need to be able to take them to court and that will all be in the summary conviction bylaw. We need the tools to, uh, to ensure that, uh, that the bylaw is being enforced. The registration bylaw is another tool that, uh, it, it's tied to the summary conviction bylaw. If you do not have a registration number with us and the province and Airbnb, uh, that leads to, uh, you know, uh, those tools that we need for conviction. So they, they're taking a little bit longer time to prepare. And this report that you're dealing with tonight says that that should all be in place, hopefully in the fall, prior to the election. Uh, those bylaws, those supplementary bylaws should be in place. And they would as well have the same provisions, all coming into enforce and effect in January of twenty twenty-three. But the key thing is, uh, what you should consider this evening is that, you know, you have an industry that's, uh, uh, going to be regulated that, uh, yes, it hasn't had the clarity that they, they may have wanted in the past. Uh, if this goes through, uh, you know, they, they may not like these regulations, but they'll at least see the direction of the city moving forward, particularly as to whatever council does with this on Monday night.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you very much, Alex. Uh, Mr. Brown, Mayor Brown.
Alex, I'm glad that the chair clarified what we're discussing tonight. It's really two stages and anytime we amend the bylaw, you have to allow for a first reading and a second reading. The purpose of the free, the first reading is to allow for discussion and debate. So I believe this has to be separated, uh, as a separate amendment and not incorporate it, uh, into what we, uh, uh, gave first reading in January, because it's part of the democratic system. And, uh, if we're not allowed, or council members are not allowed to, to get more information or to discuss the merits or the demerits of these second, second stage amendments, I, I, I think that's falling against, uh, the democratic, democratic process of, of council, legislative assembly, or the parliament of candidates. So I'm, I'm in more, uh, pre, in preference of, or preferring to separate the, the two of them. And legally, I don't think it's an issue because an amendment is an amendment. But on, on the grace period, um, you're, you're, I think you're, you're, you're siding or you're, you're trying to align it with the, uh, introduction or the, uh, the, the important part, which is the enforcement of this bylaw, and that includes summary offense ticketing. And I've asked many times over the last couple of years about the process on how we acquire that, uh, power or that responsibility from provincial legislation. And, uh, I haven't heard that or I didn't see it in the report. And thirdly, um, if I go back to the minutes of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, Tuesday, October nineteenth, their recommendation is to, um, allow the, uh, STRs a one-year grace period to allow that, um, transition from what they're doing now to long-term or, or to whatever they wanna do with the, the plan. So whether it's January tenth or March first, I, I, I think it's, 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 it's not, I, I don't think it's critical that we just stop it at January tenth. I, I, I would like to see the twelve months. To, uh, again, to give that twelve months following the recommendation from the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee to allow this grace period or this transition to happen within the industry. And also, there could be some hiccups with this summary offense ticketing legislation. There could be some hiccups with other parts of what is proposed in, in make, in trying to make this, uh, uh, STR framework function proper, properly now and into the future. It's a significant change in how we're, how we plan to do business in the city of Charlottetown. Uh, so I think we've made some big steps, but I think what I've already said, we should, again, just quickly summarize, Mr. Chair, separate what is being proposed tonight as amendments, not add it to what we gave first reading to last month. Look at that, uh, Look at that SOT, the summary offense ticketing, where, what are the timelines to acquire that provision, provisional authority from the provincial government? And thirdly, that the grace period be actually a one-year from March first, twenty twenty-two, to March first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so, okay, Alex, you, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, look, so, uh, again, because there's a lot of moving parts here, so, uh, all the summary conviction bylaw and the, uh, the registration bylaw, uh, you know, that's the strategy moving forward. The only thing that you're going to contemplate, uh, and that's up to you folks, I mean, Council, uh, is, uh, it's the one line to be put into the official plan amendments and the zoning bylaw amendments that you dealt with in January. And, and that one line is, these amendments will come into effect in January. Now, if you want to change that, that's up to Council, you can put whatever date you want in it. But, but we need to indicate that the amendments are not coming in, into effect in March because that's how it was originally set up. And, and the reason we're, we're trying to, uh, get this clarified is the province is going to be asking us, uh, on all of their applications for inside the city is, does this comply or not? So staff need to be able to, uh, send back some kind of a letter clarifying, does this property, uh, you know, conform with your regulations? If it doesn't conform, is it in the grace period? So, uh, uh, that's what we're trying to deal with. But, so the, the amendments, the, the, at second reading are only dealing with one line, one line, and then the date is up to you folks as a council.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Mayor Brown.
Just quickly, this is my point, just to follow up from Mr. Forbes.
You go.
I'm, I'm suggesting that we introduce the amendments that are, that, that we're discussing tonight as a separate amendment and that we deal with the second reading of what we passed last month under first reading. And, and that would let us, allow us to get this in place by March, uh, of this year if, if the amendments, the second set of amendments passes first reading and then gets second reading approval in March. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. So, um, yeah, so just to clarify then, so what you're thinking is that we just go back and do the amendment? That the first reading will have to go back and do first reading again after the amendment?
Uh, Mr. Chair, what I'm suggesting, the first reading of what we voted on, or what was voted on in January, the STR framework, goes to a second reading on Monday, the fourteenth, happy Valentine's? And then, uh, we can inter, uh, the, the Chair can introduce the amendments that we're talking about tonight for first amendment. Oh, sorry, for first reading.
Oh, yeah, okay. What does, Alex, what does that do to you?
Well, I, I'm just, uh, I'm, it may be, we're, I hope we're all on the same page. So, uh, so, so we need to separate, uh, most of what's in this report, that all comes later. Uh, but the only thing on the amendments that will be coming forward from staff from Monday night is in both first, uh, in the bylaws that were presented, in that little box that says, "Council approved it on this date", one more line goes underneath that, says that it all comes into force and effect on January tenth. If you want to change that, that, that's up to Council. But if you have the date, we need the date to, to kind of, uh, weave it all together and allow the, uh, the other bylaw, uh, uh, proposals to come later in the year. Uh, and, uh, they'll work themselves out a later date.
Are we allowed to speak to the amendment then during the second reading? That's, that's?
Uh, I'll, I'll have to check with David on that, but, you know, again, it's, uh, uh, and we'll work with Peter because we, we rarely change things at second, uh, second reading. But again, it, it's such a tiny change. It's, it's, it's just, it's a date, really, you're introducing a date when it comes all into force and effect. And it is a critical date because that, that is tied into the grace period. That's, the, the whole grace period is now, it, once we define the grace period, if you want the grace period, you need that date in those amendments on Monday night.
Okay, so I guess, uh, Mr. Hamlet, Basil, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so, excuse my lack of, uh, knowledge here of how the whole system works, uh, with the voting and, and the second readings. But once it goes to second reading, does that mean then it cannot be changed after that? Um, my thought is there, or does it have to wait till the January tenth becomes a factor when it's voted on that night? Um, and I'm asking that because I'm thinking that this is an election year and if it's not the same people sitting around the table come next January that don't have the same thought and commitment to this, uh, bylaw, then where does it end up? Can it be squashed and restarted again after that? Uh, as was said, this has been going on for a few years now. And everybody, I think, has, around this table, has, uh, somewhat agreed on where we're at now, hopefully. Um, but I'm just not sure what happens, or what could happen come next January, if anything. So I just want clarification on that.
Um, Council can, can, uh, you know, collectively do, do, uh, you know, they, they can make changes if necessary. But I think, you know, uh, it's important that Council listens to staff and, and, uh, be encouraged by what they have, you know, because they're the experts and, and, um, they're telling us, uh, you know, that this is important. I, I don't think anybody, uh, you know, whether we're here after November or not, I think, you know, the process will still go forward. But, um, you know, and, and maybe staff themselves, right, Alex, uh, through the consultation with the, with the, uh, the owners, uh, there might be something that we might want to change. So something can change, there's definitely always, going to always be a, a change made. Um, but I, I think most new councils would, you know, at that stage are pretty overwhelmed and I, I think there wouldn't be too many want to tackle this, just being in a month in or two months in, right? So, you know, staff would, uh, staff would be saying, look, you gotta, you gotta keep going along with this because it's a good thing. Uh, we've got everybody on board, the STR people are on board, everyone's ready to go here, so. Um, but, you know, the, the good debate will be maybe on the date. Um, so Alex, if we said tonight we're, we're approving, um, the move with the council, but, um, do we have to say January tonight or can we say possibly March? Or, or do we have to stick to that date tonight for the Planning Board?
Well, I mean, it's, you know, you, you can have a debate, uh, as to, uh, you know, you could say that, that, you know, well, if you are in agreement that, that to pass the amendments and you, you may, the Planning Board may wish to say and defer the, uh, the, you know, the, the, coming into a forced date to council. The only reason that the January tenth date is there is because the STR industry, uh, gets going really, really early in the year. And that's, we're, we're trying to, that January is kind of a slow or a low period and then everybody can work towards that date. If you get into like February or March, again, it ties into their bookings, right? If you have to make a lot of changes, that was the thought on it. But look, I mean, uh, Council can, uh, can implement what they want, even if the Planning Board, uh, as long as the Planning Board says, look, that, uh, if they're in agreement with these amendments and they will defer the, the date, uh, to come into force and effect to Council, well then, uh, then, then it's just in Council's hands as to how, what, what date they want to work with.
Okay, is that clear as mud?
Mr. Chair, again, look, as Rosemary said, we've been dealing with this for two years and we've had lots of input, three public meetings. I have the document here from the January meeting, two hundred and seventy-seven pages, um, lots of information. I think we know where we're at. Again, i- i- if, if, if we attach this amendment with January tenth or March and it's second reading, it, it's, again, I, I, I think it should be a two-stage. Do the second reading on what we, uh, discussed at, at our January tenth meeting on the STR framework and then on, uh, Monday night, the fourteenth of February, we will, uh, uh, introduce the amendment to amend what we just passed the month, month before and then have the discussion. And then come, uh, March, do a second reading, have a second reading and hopefully it'll be all a neat package going forward.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, the only problem with that, look, folks, I'm just here to, uh, it's, to, to deal with that, whatever way you want to do it. But the problem is, um, the province is going to be sending letters to us like this month. And so the longer we go, uh, have to hold off, uh, if we have to do it, it's, it's another, uh, 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 we're going to have to have another public meeting on this, uh, it, it just insert that date. The date is all tied into the grace period. So that's why it's been introduced at this time. So you're, you're, you know, Council's entitled to, to make that amendment at second reading. Uh, it, it pulls everything into place and then provides the clarity for us, when those letters start coming from the province, does my property conform or not conform in twenty twenty-two? You can do it the way that, uh, his worship, uh, has suggested. It's just that those letters are going to potentially start to stack up here as till we, when we can put that, that last line into those two bylaws that are presently moving through Council.
Okay, uh, um, so. So I guess the question is, does Planning Board want to be definite in, uh, in saying March? Or would they prefer to stay with what we're at in January of twenty twenty-three? I guess that's it. Um, uh, um, we could leave it as January, but Council has the opportunity to change it to March, right? So.
No, there's, Mr. Chair, there's, there's no, if, if he inserts it into the second reading, there's no debate. There's no discussion.
That's right.
And that's, I'm just wondering, we forget this or did legal counsel bring it up, Alex, about the date?
Well, well, it, it has to do with, it all had to do with the grace period, right? It's, uh, initially, there was, you know, the, the bylaw, the way that it's structured now, it, it, it's going to come into effect, uh, at the end of March and then we're going to be indicating that a lot of people aren't going to conform with the bylaw and they're not going to get an approval from the city of Charlottetown. So that's, you know, and, uh, and then the, the other amendments will come later. But there, there will be a lot of people impacted the way the bylaws going through. So, uh, it took a little bit of time to rationalize the grace period and, uh, and that's why, uh, now, you know, to, to, to the mayor's point or to, on the procedural people's point, the bylaw's in place. So, uh, the Planning Board has already ruled on that. Uh, the, uh, you know, if this, this is really in the domain of Council as to, uh, what they want to do at second reading. They, they, if they don't want to deal with that amendment, they, they could choose not to. But, you know, uh, if, if they want to, uh, allow all of these other, uh, regulatory regimes to follow or flow from those first set of amendments, that's what they should do on Monday night.
Okay, so, uh, any other questions at this point? Uh, okay, uh, Council Yankoff.
Thank you. Um, I was, I was less confused, now I'm more confused. So if we proceed with second reading without any amendments, as his worship has mentioned, um, does that, does that affect the, um, the timeframe to which the grace period is? And I don't understand the necessary part of the, of the amendment an- anymore. So if we don't put the amendment in, can the amendment, instead of being an amendment, be dealt with in the second, um, implementation strategy? Where in the implementation, we discuss how we implement it with our communication strategy of, although the bylaw is passed as of Monday night, it's still in a grace period. I thi- I think I just need a little bit more clarification because there's been a lot of questions and, and maybe I'm not even asking it the right way. And then my second part of that is that if we offer an opportunity for Robert to give a report again, I have, I've never yet in my, my, you know, my rookie years of council ever saw an opportunity or a time when council was given a presentation and then, then they didn't ask questions. So I don't even know how that could, could work. So any clarity would be great, either from the Chair or if he wishes to adhere to the, uh, magic in that.
Well, for now, I think, I think it's important, uh, um, I think, uh, Alex is going to, uh, Chair of Planning is going to get back to me, uh, with the question of, is there an opportunity for Council to have a discussion? Not, not so much a debate, but, uh, in an information session, like you said, uh, if that can be done before Monday night, just simply, uh, because what, you know, if, if I'm a poker player and I'm sitting here reading this table here, um, if we're confused and we've been involved in this for quite a while, what's Council going to feel like? So I think maybe, Alana, uh, you're probably correct. If there's a way Alex and I could say that, uh, we would love the opportunity for, for, uh, the legal aspect of, of the report be explained to Council, I think that's kind of trivial, I think, at this point. How does that affect tonight? I don't know if it affects anything. I think Council, or, or the Board's job here tonight is, um, we're, we are all in agreement, I guess, on, on, on the regulatory framework, which is number one. And, uh, that we're going to give, uh, staff and Council our direction that, uh, we're okay with where we're going. Um, but in the meantime, I think Alex and Legal have a little bit of work to do with it before Monday night to, to inform whether or not, um, you know, two questions. One would be the mayor's question on, on the, the, um, whether or not we can change that grace period without, without causing too much grief, um, to the STR folks. And, and the second part is, um, you know, the, you know, the discussion part. So am I clear there, Alex? Is, is, like, you need to get back to me on just what can be done before Monday?
Yep, no, I'll, I'll do that. But again, I, and, and it, it may be me, but it's just that if you do not deal with, uh, the amendment for second reading on Monday night, that one line, you will not have a grace period. You don't have a grace period, that's the problem. And it's, so you, you, you may or may not want a grace period, but if you don't make the amendment on Monday night, maybe that makes it clearer, you do not have the, the ability to give that, it, it's, the way that's set up there now is a nine-month grace period. So we need to, we need to have that in the bylaw because you're, you're dealing, the regulations are set in stone in the future. But until you get to the future, there's this interim period where we will, Council will be advising me, uh, we will accept, uh, you know, all STRs, uh, for this grace period. But, but then they're going to have to line up to the new regulations, whatever date you put on that, to bring it into force and effect. So hopefully that clarifies.
Sorry, Alex, yeah, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I, I keep going back to what the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee recommended on Tuesday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and it's quite clear, a, a one year, we, we knew that. We, we knew it was a one-year grace period that was, uh, recommended through that, that advisory committee. So it, it works out to ten months if we use the January tenth. So if we have to add the amendment, I'm saying to go from March to March.
Oh, I see what you're saying, right?
That's, and, and, and that way, uh, uh.
You're saying longer, that we could, they get a couple extra months, are you?
It goes, it goes the full year, March to March.
I agree with going a little longer.
Just, that's.
So you, you, you can make that recommendation and then I will, uh, it, it, as part of that recommendation, then the resolution that goes to Council would, would reflect that.
Yeah, and, and again, my reference is from the Advisory, Affordable Advisory Committee meeting. And I believe, uh, Alex, you were at the meeting, uh, on the nineteenth of October because it says, "Also intend, in attendance, Alex Forbes", so you heard the discussion. I'm just, again, following the recommendation. I think it's, it, it's, it's a smoothing out, uh, uh, approach or a, a transitional period.
Yep, no, that's, you know, that's a decision of, of Council, yep.
Okay, Council Yankoff.
Thank you. So if I'm hearing everyone correctly, it's twofold. There's going to be a resolution, um, forwarded to Council if this committee, um, recommends that. That second reading would have a slight amendment to, um, encompass in the one-year grace period that was discussed by the Affordable Housing Committee back in January? And is there then a second, um, resolution or recommendation that deals with this implementation strategy?
Um, it's either that or we can do, I think we could do that this evening. If, if the Planning Board feels strong enough, we can say March to March. Um, but I, I would, before I, I would caution, and I'll get Alex to explain it one more time, just even the thirty days from February, you know, from, uh, to March, what that does to those letters that are coming from the problems. I think, I need Alex to explain that one more time.
So, so again, I mean, we, we use that January dates just because it, it's had a slow part of the year. It's, uh, it's the start of the year, operators are getting back into business. Uh, we're nine months out, uh, from when this will be approved, uh, hopefully in March by the minister. So then all of those operators have nine months to anticipate that, that their, their grace period will drop, uh, in, in, on January tenth of, uh, twenty twenty-three. It's up to you folks as a council if you want to extend that, but it's just a matter of, uh, But it's just a matter of, uh, you know, that's the rationale. And then the new season starts in 2023 and everything, all, all of those supplementary bylaws are done. So the res- to, uh, you know, to, to Councilor Yankoff's question, there'll be two sets of resolutions for Monday night. There'll be a resolution to direct staff to implement or, or to prepare the requisite bylaws, the registration bylaw, uh, the summary conviction bylaw, and have that in place by a date. That's just like a, just a resolution. It's a, a direction to, to staff to make sure that that's done. And then the second part of that, that's why it's sort of like two pieces there, is to make that, put in that one sentence, dealing with when it all comes into force and effect, and that's dealing with your grace period. And I'm, um, I will, I will defer to council as to whatever date that they think is most appropriate.
But, but, uh, Alana, go ahead, I'll let you answer. Go ahead, please.
Again, so if I'm hearing Mr. Forbes correctly, if we don't put an amendment in there, whether it's January or March, if there's no amendment in second reading, that means that there is no grace period?
Correct, yep.
Is that correct?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's clear, I can get that solved.
Grace period is now.
So.
Yeah, follow up, yep.
If I also then hear correctly, we, we, we clearly, um, made a mistake then when this was first sent to council for a first reading? Because we should have known about this before we went to first reading? And so now we're trying to fix a mistake? Or is that correct?
Um, I, I don't know why I would say it's a mistake. I, I just think, uh, our, the legal team, uh, um, really, you know, we've, we've had all this time and then all of a sudden we, we've set it on the legal's lap within a couple of months and, and, um, after review, you know, given as time, well, they, they were starting to see that, um, it might be a bad idea to define the, the grace period, which we didn't really understand before. I think, would that be true, Alex?
Well, in, in the report that was sent, the original report that went to council and was debated on in January, talked about the grace period and, and said that that would be defined as how to deal with that grace period. And I've been working with the, the city solicitor. There's a number of different ways you can skin this cat. I mean, there, there's, there's, there's one way, another way, but it's, uh, when it all kind of is laid out in regard to all of these moving parts, the solicitor just felt, uh, it's, it's more, uh, it's easier to, to implement for you folks. It's easier for the STR operators. It gives us the, the time to pull the bylaws together. And then everybody's working toward one date, not two dates. You, you know, because the way it is now, the, the, the effective date it all comes into effect will be in March if you don't make that one line amendment on Monday night. So it's just, uh, uh, you know, there is a lot of complexity with what's going on in these things. Staff have been working on it a long time. This is new law in the country, and so this isn't a standard rezoning application. So there's been a lot of work prepared on this. And it's just, uh, and, you know, staff have been under a lot of pressure for a long time to, to get these amendments in front of you. So that's where we are.
Okay. Good thing, Alana, or Julie McKay, did you have a question there? No?
No, I was going to follow up on Alana's question just a little bit around that. Because I would hopefully, who was probably part of this whole process all along, was it not? Like looking at what we had, before we brought this to the first reading, would they have not had a good look at that?
Uh, they, yeah, yeah, again, uh, they, they were aware of it. But again, you've got to realize that there's, this is a brand-new bylaw. But it may be the first, it could be the second bylaw in Atlantic Canada. So we're, the legal is looking at that for the first time, staff are looking at that. You're dealing with a summary conviction bylaw, you're dealing with a licensing bylaw. Uh, this is a, a very, uh, you know, sort of a robust process. And we just want to make sure that when it's brought into effect, that, that it is, uh, you know, that it, it's, that we can defend it, we can do the, uh, the enforcement on it, and that, uh, uh, that it all works. But this, this is an incredible amount of work to get to where we, we, we are.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're moving on.
Love to that, I agree, Alex, and I appreciate all the work that went in. I would just hope that we're doing it right before we're rushing things in, you know? We rushed her and get it. The work, like everyone said, the committee has been forever. And then you get, uh, you know, the first reading through and stuff. And now we're picking up little things that need to be tightened up. I just, it's just good to have it done properly, but thank you.
Date is good. Uh, is that Chris, is it?
Yeah, Chris, yes. I just have one question, I get why we're here to, to move this on and that. But there was something you said, uh, the operators are looking for direction of how to move on. And that's why, you know, you wanted to get this done. And obviously, to some of them, this would be the potato award of their industry. You know, they spent millions of dollars on these buildings. They're going to have huge tax implications when they sell it and that. Are you getting any feedback from them? Like, is 12 months enough time for them to restructure their, their buildings, their taxes, everything else? Because I know it's going to affect a lot of people, the Charlatan business people.
Uh, look, I mean, it's, you know, we, we've been out to the public on this numerous times. And again, we're, you know, it, it, it's, it, you know, there's, there's a technical side to this and there's a political side to it, right? So, uh, it's my job to make sure that it's technically sound when it goes through. But, you know, you know, some of those questions are more of, uh, you know, what, what, what is the appropriate balance? And it's one of those bylaws that you're going to bring into effect. It's, it clearly there's somebody is not going to be happy with the outcome, uh, but.
Yeah, I understand that, I guess. But what my question is, when you say they're looking for direction for, for where they're going to take this to, are they giving you any, anything like that, that, that it should be longer, or they?
No, they, you know, they pretty well, I think, knew after the big public hearing at the Confederation Center, you know, somewhat of the direction of the, uh, of the community, at least, uh, you know, the staff recommendation is based upon what we heard through the public consultation. But, uh, you know, the issue is, you know, some of the discussion here this evening is, they want to know whether they're going to be out of business in March? Or are they going to be, you know, protect, potentially out of business, uh, at the end of this year? And, you know, again, it's a, it's a discussion that we're having here this evening. So we're, we're just trying to, uh, uh, you know, to pull all of these moving parts together, have them working, uh, in tandem early in the, uh, 2023, and allowing the industry, council, and the public to get by a very, you know, contentious issue in the community.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Chris, uh, great point, because, uh, I, I was just looking at the backgrounder that Alex provided for this, uh, presentation. And in this page three of four, staff will work with the city solicitor to develop a bridging mechanism to recognize those operators who cannot comply with the new municipal regulation in 2022. So we've been working in that, in, in, in the, in the direction you're talking about. And then it says on these, almost near the end of, of page three, um, council to provide a 10-month grace period, uh, grace period, January 2023, for those operators who had a valid provincial license. Um, then it says to bring staff, direct staff to bring back to council in the fall of 2022, the accompanying, accompanying bylaws, uh, registration bylaw, summary conviction. So that, that grace period is not really just for the operators. It's for the, uh, the department, the staff, to put the, the blocks in place. And I, again, I just keep going back to, uh, uh, Chris, I keep going back to the Affordable Housing recommendation, 12-month grace period. And I, it goes from March to March, that's what I'm saying. I, I, I don't think the minister will, uh, the minister responsible for land use, Joyce Thompson, will say come January, well, he said to, to March, the grace period is from March 2023, so I can't sign anything off. I think, you know, there's, there's going to be flexibility here. Because we're breaking new ground, as Alex has said, Alex has stated. And Alex, as for the other municipality in this region that has gone down this road, has made the approach or made changes, is Halifax. But Halifax is looking at a one-year, um, implementation period. So I don't think we have reinvented, uh, we didn't have to reinvent the wheel here. There was already a template out there in Halifax. We have it in Vancouver, Victoria, Toronto. So it's 10 months, I'm saying 12 months. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So, um, Rosemary Herbert. Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. And when I read that, uh, information in your report, Alex, about the, um, the bridging program, the bridging mechanisms, you know, the thought that occurred to me was like, are we talking there about some kind of grandfathering clauses to grandfather these folks in? Or what do we mean by bridging mechanism? Sorry, I got on the table late in the discussion, but it's, you know, a lot of people are talking.
No, there's no grandfathering. Grandfathering is a, a legal term for something very different. It's just a grace period. It's just, it's, it's when the bylaw comes into force and effect. And then until that point, those people that have been operating, uh, uh, as long as, they're going to, can, still have to continue to work with the province to make their applications with the province. Some people did and some people didn't, but that still is going to be in place. Uh, the province is intending to, uh, get a letter from us and every operator who wants to operate 2022. And we need to be clear in those letters as to what the rules of the road are. That's what we're trying to deal with this evening.
Okay. Um, thanks, Rosemary. Um, so just to be clear, and, and then I'll, I'll ask, uh, if there's nothing else we can, we can move forward. So by moving from January 23 to March of 2023, to give a full year, how does that slow down this year's process? Like, will?
It, 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 it doesn't slow, uh, sorry, to interject, uh.
This year's applications.
Yeah, it, it's just, the slowing is at the, the other end of it. In regard to that, uh, you know, people will be allowed to extend for the first two or three months, depending on what date you put onto it, into 2023. And they, they will have, uh, to, to the mayor's point, they'll have a year to, to, to realize, uh, that they'll know what the new bylaw requirements are coming into a force and effect. And, uh, they should be transitioning, uh, to the new reality, uh, you know, as early as, it's up to, up to them. But they'll know the date that the new regulations are coming into effect. And if they, if they don't comply with those regulations, they'll at least know, don't be booking that same unit for April of that year because, uh, you're not going to get a letter from the, from the city. And again, the, the reason for that earlier date is that, you know, people are, are trying to get their approvals in place as quickly as possible, right? They, they like to get their, the, some of their, that, this lag work done up early, so then they can start walking and doing their things. But again, we, we'll deal with whatever date the council provides.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, uh.
Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification.
Yes, yeah, sure.
Alex, so what we did last month for the first reading, we have set up the framework, a short-term rental framework. On Monday, the 14th, we will be getting the, doing a second, we'll, we'll do the second reading. And then it will have to go down to the minister to get signed off, okay?
Right.
Therefore, if I'm a businessperson or arrive into Charlatan from Toronto and say, hey, I'm going to buy a home and I'm going to rent it out as an STR. So I go to the province to get my provincial license, and they say, no, you can't. You have to go to the city first. So I go down and see Robert Zilk or yourself, or Ellen, Ellen Catani, and ask, Ellen, I want to get a, a, a permit for a STR. And she'll say, will she be asking, do you live in the home that you'll be renting in? Or will this be allowed?
That will be, that will all come into effect next year. Uh, that, if you, if you, if you have an STR during, if you approve the grace period, uh, we will write a letter back to the province and say, please be advised that council has, uh, come, uh, will be bringing in these new regulations in 2023. At that time, this property will not comply with the regulations that have been approved, notwithstanding they've introduced a grace period. And for this year only, you will be allowed, the, the city will support your application with the province for a tourist home license.
Okay, but, but just quickly follow up, Mr. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chair. But that is also to allow our department, our planners, to make sure that there's a bridging mechanism in place, to ensure that there is an STR license bylaw, summary conviction bylaw, all the enforcement parts to this, uh, all the enforcement and registration issues to this, uh, to this framework, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay, great.
And it will come as two, it'll come as two resolutions to next month's meeting. One set of resolutions is all about make sure that these accompanying bylaws are all in force and effect. Uh, and then the other one is just to make that small little one-settles amendment for second reading on the other, uh, amendments that are going through. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. Good, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, if no further questions, um, I guess we've talked this out. Uh, are we comfortable in moving forward? Uh, if so, I'll need a motion, um, to move it forward to council with, uh, with the two amendments for Monday night.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, for clarity, did, did you, uh, are you comfortable with the January 10th date? Or would you, would like that, that, that date advanced to March?
I would, I, me personally, I mean, uh, I would say March.
Okay, so, uh, I, you know, I can pick an arbitrary, I can, I can get my calendar here. But, you know, with your indulgence, I'll, I'll give you a date, uh, in March. But kind of, you know, it's not a weekend, uh, to, to implement it. And I'll make sure that that, uh, flows through to, in the council package.
Right, so, um, I'll, I guess, so what I will ask then is, is a motion for that, uh, and a second. Yeah. Is, are we happy with that? So someone make a motion. I don't see everyone jumping up with joy. So, uh, you know, if, if there's a hesitation, spit it out. Like, let's, uh, you know, this is the time, right? If the board's not, you know, I, I think we're all on the same page that the regulatory framework is right. Uh, number one is what we picked. And tonight's discussion basically is on, is on the grace period. Uh, do we want to go with either January, which was first suggested by staff, or, or the mayor's idea, which was the, give them the full year recommended by the, uh, Affordable Housing Committee?
But, Mr. Chair, my, my, uh, my, uh, uh, one year, 12 months is based on what the,
Affordable Housing.
Housing Advisory Committee recommended. And also, uh, Mr. Forbes has stated that he does need that grace period to put in place.
Yes.
The summary conviction, uh, uh, ticketing bylaw and the registration and the licensing and so forth. So it's not just for the, for the owners, it's, it's for us, it, it's also for us too. And whether it's 10 months or 12 months, again, it, it just allows more time for our staff to be, uh, to give them some time. Because Alex, I know you've worked really hard on this. And same as I, I, big thanks out to Robert Zilk and all the staff for the work that's been put into this, uh, this initiative. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you, so.
And Mr. Chair, with your indulgence, why, why don't we go with March 28th? Just so that we have a, we have a date.
Okay, March 28th. Uh, is everyone okay with that? If so, okay, I'll need a motion, guys, to move this along. Anyone care to make a move, make a motion and second this?
I'll move that we move this forward to council. And I would agree with the one-year, uh, March date.
Okay, thank you, moved by Shalan Murray. I need a second. Rosemary Herbert will second that. So all those in favor of what we had discussed this evening on recommending staff's idea to council for Monday night? Put your hand up, please. And anybody against, I see none. So it's on the council we go. So thank you very much, everybody, for discussion on this. It's, uh, it's been a big file and, uh, appreciate everyone's patience on this one. It's, uh, um, like you say, we are in new charter territories for sure and, uh, appreciate all the work. Did you have something, uh, Council McKay?
Just wanted to make sure Alex could follow up to see if there is a possibility to get those calls out.
He's going to give me, yeah, for sure, yeah, okay. Thank you, uh, need a motion to adjourn? Moved by, oh, Council Yankoff has a question, or a concern.
Are we doing any introduction of new business?
I don't want to. Okay, so we move on that? Okay, yeah, so thank you very much, uh, Council Yankoff. Uh, under new business, is there anything?
I just wondered, were we doing, were we moving anything forward to council for a discussion around council's, um, will or interest or, or a report about the bylaw around the pool and fencing? Or are we premature on that?
Uh, I think Alex can answer that, but I think it's going to the planning committee.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's the, that's the, that's the planning committee's domain. So, uh, we'll, I, I need to come to you folks fairly soon with a, uh, request to, uh, approve my budget. So, uh, we'll put it on then. We'll put it on after you approve my budget.
Thank you very much, Alana. Uh, any other, uh, anything else on a new business? I see none, okay, I need a motion to adjourn. Moved by Council McKay, seconded by Bob Kenny, all those in favor. Thank you very much, everyone, have a good evening. Thanks again. Bye-bye.